Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Thursday, October 26th, Board of Education Regular Business Meeting. Can we all please stand for the pledge? And all please remain standing. I pledge allegiance. As we gather here tonight, I'm reminded of the profound and often challenging times we are living in. From global event, from global events to local challenges, we are all interconnected in a world that faces uncertainty and change. I invite you to join me in a moment of silence or reflection. Let us pause to consider the current state of our world and remember those who are affected by the pressing matters that's around us. It is during these times that the strength and resilience of our community shine brightest, and we come together in unity. Thank you, please be seated. Again, welcome to our beautiful auditorium here in North Babylon. I thank everyone for attending, those of you that are at home watching, hello as well. Ms. Veronica, can we do roll call?
Certainly. Mr. Lucetti?
Here.
Mrs. Rowland?
Here.
Dr. Burnett? Mr. Myers? Mrs. Reivers? Mr. Shai? And Mrs. Tedesco? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Correspondence to the board. As you can see, we have one for Ms. Maria Martinez. If you have sent something into our district clerk from September 24th to October 20th and you don't see your name here, please reach out to the district clerk and make sure she gets your correspondence sent out to us. Is there any add-ons to the agenda?
There's none at the moment.
Great. So superintendent's report, Dr. Graham?
Great, thank you, Mr. Lucetti. This evening, I don't know if you all noticed from the public, there's some swag bags here in front of the board members. I don't know if all of you are aware, but the individuals at the dais who are board members do not get paid. This is a volunteer position, and they do put in a tremendous amount of time. So this evening, those bags represent just a little token of appreciation from people throughout our district. You also notice that there's some certificates there. I believe there's one from Western Suffolk Bosys, and of course, the district is in receipt of commendation from the governor's office as well. So we wanted to just thank the board. And another token of our appreciation for all that the board does is going to come in the form of a video. So I don't know if the board wants to go into the seats, or if you want to turn your heads. It's totally up to you. But I'm gonna ask Mr. Rose to press play when everybody's ready. So we certainly should recognize Alicia too, from Syntax, who was instrumental in putting the video together. And I think she wants to take a photo of the board at this point now.
I would just like to quickly say, I mean, that was really awesome. I've been here for, you know, nine years now, and that was a really special moment right now. So whoever was involved in that, and to all the kids who were involved, from my heart, as you can tell, a couple tears might have been fallen. Thank you very much, it really means a lot.
All right. Continuing with our celebrations, I think we're gonna invite Aiden and Kyla up to the microphone to provide the MBHS student report. So welcome, Aiden, and welcome, Kyla. And maybe you could just share, when you come to the microphone, just tell us your name and grade, and then you could share your report.
Hello, I'm Aiden Rayo, sophomore class president.
And I'm Kyla Chow, which is sophomore class vice president. I would like to say that the school has been doing very well lately. We recently had our homecoming parade, game, and dance. We beat Center each four, forty-four to fourteen, go Bulldogs. Speaking of NV Sports, for the first time in seventeen years, the girls' cross-country team qualified for the county championship. Alicia DeFilippis led the charge by winning the team qualifying race with a time of 2006.
At the last Board of Education meeting, we discussed the possibility of selling decorated parking spots as a fundraiser for our school. We believe this would be a great way to raise money for our senior class and show off our students creativity. We are still in the early stages of planning, but we are excited about the possibilities. We'll be sending out more information about the decorated parking spot fundraiser in the coming weeks. In the meantime, we encourage the students to start thinking about how they would like to decorate their parking spots.
The PSATs also went amazing with the new online format. Over 1,000 students took the test on their Chromebooks.
The North Babylon High School Drama Club is putting on a production of Clue. It is the third and fourth of November at 7:00 PM. Hope to see you all there, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Aiden, thank you, Kyla. The nice thing about having a student report is it trims down the superintendent's report a little bit. So there were a number of things that, as they were saying it, I was checking off were good. Homecoming was truly an amazing day despite the weather. We did celebrate Unity Day at Robert Moses Middle School last week. It was a day dedicated to kindness, acceptance, and inclusion. I want to thank Ms. Andress, Ms. Stewart, and the entire middle school staff. It was truly an amazing event. I don't know if you had the opportunity to see the CBS News piece on it, but we're gonna share that out with the community on the website later this week. I also wanted to mention that earlier this month, it's been quite some time since we've met as a group, but earlier this month, we had a parent presentation by Jeremy Thode focused on acceptance. The presentation was titled "You Shall Not Walk Alone." And while it was not highly attended, the people here, I think, who were participating and listening really felt, I think, a tremendous amount of optimism after hearing Jeremy's presentation. And we do have another parent workshop scheduled for November 8th here in this, sorry, next door in the Little Theater. And that one is titled "Every Town For Gun Safety." So I encourage parents and families to come out if that's something that you're interested in, and we'll share more information on that as well. Our students have been involved with many activities, including fire safety activities, fall festivals. We have Halloween activities coming up this week. And of course, we have the football season continuing with playoffs, and the regular season continues. As mentioned by Aiden and Kyla, we had the high school drama production of Clue, November 3rd and 4th at 7:00 PM. So make sure you get your tickets for that, and I think more information will be coming out. And we had our marching band participate in the Newsday Marching Band Festival last week. And anyone who was able to get there, it was really an amazing evening filled with a tremendous amount of spirit. And what I said to the football players earlier this evening during their dinner is, you know, when I'm putting these things out there and sharing them, I'm indicating that it's a proud superintendent moment, and it truly is. There's a lot of things here that make me very proud to be a part of this team here in North Babylon. So the marching band, the marching band participation was phenomenal. And again, visit our website, download our app, visit us on social media. There's a lot of ways that we're attempting to get information about our district out there, and we want to make sure that people have access to all of that. And so the final part of the superintendent's present, presentation this evening, or report, is a presentation from Ms. Manzi and a number of our special education staff members, who are going to share some information and give an overview of our PPS programs. So if the board would want to go into the audience at this time.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Monica Manzi, Assistant Superintendent for People, Personal Services, and Special Education. I'm here, and I would love for them all to introduce themselves here. We're here as a group presenting tonight on People, Personnel, and Special Education. So if everyone would like to introduce themselves, that would be great.
Hi, Alyssa Imhoff, I'm the Assistant Director of Special Education, grade six through the age of 21.
Carrie O'Rourke, Assistant Director of Special Ed for preschool and K-5.
Steve Tombo, Director of Guidance, K-12.
So under the umbrella of PPS and special, under the umbrella of PPS and Special Education, it is the Guidance Department, also known as the School Counseling Department, Central Registration, Nursing, and Special Education. So within our department, this is the staff, these are all of the members of our staff. So from Special Education teachers, to counselors, to school psychologists, guidance counselors, nurses, occupational therapists, behavior consultants, you see some asterisks next to certain positions. Our nurses were still looking to hire an additional nurse for one of our elementary schools, and we do use a bunch of nurses from agencies to support our Special Education students and their medical needs. Occupational therapy as well, we have four new positions that we'd love to thank the board for their support in approving that recommendation. And we work with a group of in-house occupational therapists, and we do have the support of some agency therapists as well. Underneath there, and unfortunately somewhat off the screen, is our Behavior Consultant, which we do have an in-house Behavior Consultant, and then also work with agencies as well. If you look at our Special Education data through the years, 2020, 2021, '22, and '23, please note that '22 and '23 are estimates, as New York State hasn't published the information yet. We are pretty certain that our numbers are fairly accurate. Nevertheless, until SED puts it out on the screen and takes our data, we do always wait for them to confirm our numbers. Something important to mention is that later in the year during our budget presentation, we very often will present you a slide of the state of Special Education and the amount of students that are receiving services and are in the middle of the referral process. Those numbers appear higher, and there's a reason for that. It's three-quarters through the year, we have classified students, more students are getting evaluated, and the numbers are bigger as the school year goes on, with child find and all the different ways that we identify students who are struggling and then build plans for them. These numbers rise throughout the year. If we were to look at numbers that were not reported by the state, the state reports the numbers from October 10th, and it's only the students who are currently classified in a program. So if they're currently being referred, if they are awaiting some sort of program replacement, they're not factored into this number. So I would, especially on the preschool level where we have seen an influx of students, that number of 104, if we were to port out all the great work that's going on in our department, it would be significantly higher.
And when we talk about a CSE meeting or the Committee of Special Education, there's many people involved in each child who has an IEP. You will always have a chairperson, that could be the building psychologist, or one of the district-wide chairpeople. Sometimes myself or Ms. Imhoff. Obviously, the parent, school psychologist, classroom teacher, always a gen ed teacher, and then if there's a Special Education teacher that educates a child, they'll be there as well, related service providers. And anybody the parent wants to attend, your mother, your friend. And we have parent members as well with the district, so you can request a parent member. That's another parent in the district who has gone through the process, who could support a parent who's newly going through the process. Or if you just would like their support. And then for every meeting, we have four clerical in the Special Education office that helps us create all these meetings. They need to figure out who needs to participate in each meeting, they schedule it, they create a draft IEP, so all the different people who work with your child can put information into that IEP. Then we actually hold the meeting, and then anything that happened at the meeting needs to be, again, probably added. Maybe we've ordered other evaluations, all that has to happen before we finalize what occurred in that meeting, and then you get a new document. So all of that happens during a meeting. And, you know, first, a student gets referred to Special Education, which usually, there are mandated evaluations. A psychological, an educational, a social history, and a classroom observation are mandated by the Part 200s for the evaluation. And then a parent can ask for other ones, like speech, ROT, or PT, depending on your concerns. Then you will always have that first initial meeting to go over those evaluations and talk about qualifying. And once a student actually has an IEP, every year mandated, you have to have an annual review meeting before July 1 to talk about how the child's school year went, and see if there's anything that needs to be added or reduced, change in program. And then we have program reviews, because those can happen anytime during the school year, at parent request, at building request. So anytime we think we shouldn't wait to an annual review, we want to add something, take it away, someone has a concern, or we just want to do a check-in, we can have a program review meeting.
Because of all of the meetings that happen during the school year, and as Ms. O'Rourke said, there are many kinds of meetings that occur, it's important just to note the number and the amount of meetings we have in an effort to support our students. And not only is it important to note the number of meetings, but really, the point of this slide is, for every meeting that we create, our four, the four ladies who work in our office, our clerical support do an amazing job. And they're not here tonight, but once again, it's kind of off the slide, and I apologize for that. From summer to about October 15th, we're already 250 meetings in, making every effort to support each child in the district. And then by the end of the school year, so all of last school year, when you add up the number of meetings between initials and program reviews and any different ways we needed to support children through the CSE process, including annual reviews, we're close to 2,000 meetings. That slide, that number on the bottom is 1,973, I can't remember. But it's just really important that we note all of the hard work that comes from our office, as well as from all of the staff that work on every single meeting. So whether it's the school psychologist, the chairperson, related service providers, Special Education teacher, all the general education teachers who support our students in classes, I can keep going. But it really is a team, it really is a process, and we really make every effort to support our students to the best of their abilities.
Good evening, everybody. So these are our district-based programs. They range from Related Services, Resource Room, Consultant Teacher Services, ICT, Special Classes. And we do have our out-of-district programs, other public schools, Bosys, private, and some residential programs as well. At the elementary level, we have three classrooms at William E. DeLuca that are a special class 812. That's no more than eight students, one Special Ed teacher, and two aides. We have two bridge classes, that's the 1212 special class. Same thing, no more than 12 students, one Special Ed teacher, and two paraprofessionals to support that class. And then we have eight classes of special class 151. And all of our buildings at the elementary level have Resource Room, the ability to have consult teacher, and Related Services. Then at Woods Road, we have six sections of Integrated Co-teaching, which is a general education class that can have up to 12 students in it with IEPs. And we have the same at Belmont, six different sections for Integrated Co-teaching. And MGV Empowerment have Resource Room, the ability to have consult teacher, and Related Services. In keeping along with programs, at Robert Moses Middle School, we have an 812 Strive class, a 1211 Bridge class, a 1212, which is our Career Development Program. We have 21 sections of 1511, 28 sections of our Integrated Co-teaching, two sections of Resource Room, Consultant Teacher Services, and other Related Services. Continuing along in the high school, we have two sections of our CDP program, 25 sections of self-contained, six sections of Resource Room, 43 sections of our Integrated Co-teaching, Consultant Teacher, and Related Services as well.
Here's just some information on our students who attend out-of-district placements. We do make every effort to visit as many students every year, if not once, more. This is in an effort to make sure that they're receiving quality services, that we're meeting their needs, and that when we make recommendations for the following year, that we make an informed recommendation that best supports whatever our student needs moving forward. We're going real quick, and we're moving through a lot of slides, so I'm just gonna pause for a second just to see if there's any questions, because we've hit a lot of slides, and we've hit them quickly. Updating the slides, I have numbers at the end of the year as well. When we do our board presentation in the spring, we do add the numbers at the end of the year for this year, but I can add the numbers from last year, and definitely share it on that slide, no problem. The regs are very specific in terms of ICT classes, and the way they write the language, I'm sorry that I don't have it with me, because I would love to read directly from it, but it has to do with a range of between 12 and 14 students per class. There's like a "should not," but then there's a, there's a, you should not go over, but then you must not go over. There's two different statements with the numbers, but I can get you the exact language for that, just to make sure I'm accurate. But it does range between 12 and 14 for Special Education students and a General Education class. As for 504s, 504s can fall in any class. Not necessarily, we do try to create a balance in those classes, but they are supposed to be of a typical size. But if you're putting 12 to 14 Special Education students in there, there's only so many General Educations students you could put in there and still keep within the board standards, and that is something that is very important to us. So goals that are in progress, things that we're currently working on. We're always looking at our students, our students' development, cognitive, academic, behavioral, emotional, medical, and we continue to try to work to make sure that we meet every student's needs, which means from year to year, we're always growing and learning as our students develop and they come to us. We're always working, as I've mentioned in the past few years, we've been working on our reading block. We're very excited to have a fully developed reading block that's now in every special class at DeLuca. And also with our reading consultant, we're working in our ICT classes and with our students district-wide, whether they're in Resource Room, whatever program they may be in. If there's reading support needed, we do work hard to get that reading support to them. We are also always looking to collaborate. We're looking to collaborate not only with our teachers, our Special Education teachers, our administrators and everyone in the building, but equally as important as our relationship with parents, and making sure there's an open dialogue, and we all have the ability to connect, talk, share, and work together moving forward to make the best programs we possibly can. Here we have in the corner, we have our guidebook. This is when the guidebook was first made, it was in 2021, '22. It's a list of district programs and commonly asked questions. It came out of a focus group that's been chaired by Ms. Jen Mitchell-Dina Tally. Ms. Tedesco's helped us out with that as well. It's been a great learning for everybody involved, having parents, teachers, and administrators meet on a regular basis throughout the school years, learning what questions they have and best ways to meet students' needs. And for us to make sure that the messaging and the information we share is all presented in a way that's understandable to parents, as well as to everybody else involved, is something that's super important to us. We continue also to develop our extracurricular activities, whether it be basketball or bowling, in terms of our city sports. Other things that we work on is making sure we're supporting our paras, our support staff, teaching them any means necessary to de-escalate maybe student crisis, or student concerns, or students who are struggling emotionally. Proactive behavior supports, we do our best to make, so when we're in school and we have programs in all of our different buildings, sometimes it's hard to get maybe an ICT team, to see a special class team, and to see what's going on in the different buildings. So throughout the school year, something we also focus on is trying to get our buildings to connect and to observe each other, and to just get to know what our programs look like, feel like, and the day-to-day ongoings in the classrooms. and to just get to know what our programs look like, feel like, and the day-to-day ongoings in the classrooms. So now I'm going to shift gears for a moment and we're going to talk about guidance a little bit.
Good evening. So this is the kind of breakdown that we have this year. We have three councils in the middle school, we have six councils in the high school, all New York State certified. Some of the highlight of events that are going on through the year, each of these programs that we're running are targeted to different grades to support nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and also in the middle school where they did the Red Ribbon today. And these are some of the initiatives coming out. One of the few more newer ones that we're doing is we just partnered with Nassau BOSIs where we had fourteen students sign up for an online AP program for classes that we don't offer here, completely paid by a grant supported by Nassau BOSIs. Yesterday alone, we, as mentioned earlier, we had the new PSAT, digital PSAT rolled out where we had eleven hundred students take the PSAT. I think it ran rather smoothly. We have a bunch of other events that are taking place, again, each trying to support all of our different students in all the grades.
Okay, so at the conclusion of our presentation, we just thought it would be great if we shared with all of you some ways that we're always looking to evaluate and what things could possibly look like moving forward, given the evaluations that we do on an ongoing basis. We are looking at our grant positions as they started a few years ago, and we will be evaluating the positions that are currently in place. SED made a change and now students are able to stay till the age of twenty-two. So we're evaluating the impact on that for us for us next year. We're also looking at our CDP rooms at the high school and updating and revamping them, giving them an extreme home makeover, so to speak. There'll be a work in progress, it'll take a few years, but we've already started. We're always looking for different programs for our preschoolers. Something that's been a huge concern this year is the amount of preschool programs that have been available to anyone on Long Island, not just us, but the whole island is struggling with the amount of services available. So we are looking at special programs at the preschool level and just evaluating different ways we can support our community members, starting at the very earliest stage. We are looking at the nine-period day and what kinds of classes will support our student and our student's growth. And our varsity sports, our two varsity sports that we've started in the last years, not only have they been a lot of fun, I think our students, all of them, gen ed and special ed alike, have had a wonderful experience and there's been a bunch of growing just from being a part of that, those activities. And here we are at the end. Any other questions?
AP environment, we did two math classes, like a Calc BC that weren't able to take. Four of the students signed up for AP Psychology, which is a program that we don't have, so it was pretty interesting. The grant actually started with Nassau County, but they didn't have enough students, so they opened it up to the state. They sent us an email, we started getting along. So we put it out to all juniors and seniors and fourteen people. There was a few more, but they, some of them, I was trying to work with making sure their grades were right and they can handle taking another class on top of the caseload that they have during the day. And we had a representative from Nassau BOSIs come speak to us, introduce the students to the class and type of rigor that was going to be included. And they're in about their third week now taking these courses.
We have the rural program, we have mindfulness and a variety of programs through Kate Finnick, but putting that aside for a second, having social workers in every building has allowed us to push in, to create relationships, and to identify mental health issues and concerns and create some building-level counseling opportunities that we always, we didn't always have the ability to do. So when I think about SCL, it's not only about the programs, but it's about the students knowing that there are mental health professionals in each and every building to support our students, whether they're upset about a friend situation, a test, or maybe a much larger issue, but that we really do address the mental health issues of our students. I think mental health concerns are just not only district-wide but island-wide. I think it's not as taboo to talk about, and I think, I think kind of demystifying it or not making it so taboo to talk about and having social workers having the ability to push into the classrooms, if it's just a hello, or this is me, or this is what I'm here for, kind of conversation. All of a sudden, it's becoming easier to engage in those conversations and they're reaching out more. So I think we always are looking at trends in our students to see what they need, and I think the trends can change from time to time. And I think social media affects the changes and the trends as well. But right now, in this moment, we continue to focus on our attendance, we continue to focus on our students feeling comfortable, safe, and able to access learning because they are comfortable and they're safe and their mental health is in a good place. But it is a work in progress and we just have to continue to evolve as our students present with issues. Social workers start in the beginning of the year with an introduction to all of the classes. After that, there will be additional push-in letters. Some are related to ruler, some are related to other initiatives that we have going on in the district. And then some of the push-ins are really specifically related to concerns that come up in their classroom with their students. So by the end of last year, you know, unfortunately, we had the need for social workers to push into classrooms for different reasons, but they were available, they knew their students in their class because they had built relationships. And they were able to walk in and whether it was a group lesson or they pulled a few students out, they were able to counsel students in meaningful ways and address the concerns that were, like in real time. I think that's a really good question. I think at the high school, there's been some conversation and even just in terms of scheduling classes and talking about rigor, I think that's a great place also to consider pushing into classes. I think everybody's mental health needs a check-in. I can't say in this particular moment, there's one particular concern. We have a ton of concerns. We have concerns about violence in our schools, we have concerns about the impact of social media. We have concerns about students who have severe, who experience some level of severe and persistent mental illness yet are still able to function and come to school with us and we support them in every way possible. So there's so many different ways that I can answer that question. I don't know if I have, I don't know if there's a right answer to that because as the students' needs change, we have to change and make sure we're addressing them. And if that means getting some sort of sedative development, then we need to do that. PM Pediatrics has been a great partnership. It's expanded its ability to work with us this year. When we started with the pilot last year, it was really just for students where you were considering whether they needed to go to a hospital for an intake or a higher level of care. And this year, they're now taking anything that we consider a mental health crisis. So students who are struggling in friend groups, students who are struggling with the rigor of classes, students that are struggling with family situations. We're now able to make referrals to get some short-term therapy and to help link us to the community for long-term options for them if the families so choose to avail themselves of it. Did I answer that first? Because I got a question for you though, okay? I think they're both important. The social workers have definitely been in classes and they've introduced themselves for the year. We are meeting regularly with them to discuss the different kinds of push-ins that should happen for the whole class. It should be a combination of both. There was a grant position for the speech therapist? I think that's the amount of special education powers that we have. We have special education powers and then there are other powers in the district that support programs and buildings in different ways. Oh, okay. And the asterisk, okay, I know what the asterisk's for now that I'm looking at it. That's a lower number because it was partly COVID-related and it was from four years ago where we weren't counting and separating the numbers. So that is, when I know my number's not absolutely perfect and it could be off of it, we do like to acknowledge that. Speech therapist, that's six-point-five. Thank you very much. You gave us an extra one-point-oh. You had to prove that. And we have some grant supports there also. Speech is something, is a related service that is so very important for our students. This, I'm going to start with the last part and then go to the first part. So supporting the ones we have, we do engage in staff development as often as is absolutely possible. The best example right now is Superintendent's Conference Day coming up in early November. We'll be working with all of the powers in the cafeteria aids for either a half to a full day, refreshing in CPI, adding strategies for working with our students in their classrooms. But CPI, Crisis Prevention Intervention, offers a program of verbal de-escalation so that hopefully it never gets to the point where a student requires a hands-on approach. And we're, we make sure that we train as many powers as we possibly can every year. Right now, the list for Superintendent's Conference Day is easily over a hundred between both groups. Some receive a refresher because they had the training, full training last year. If they didn't have the full training last year, they have the full training this year. It's on an alternating basis, but you get the full training at least every other year. And if they want to come and take the full training next week, they can certainly do that as well. We also do some staff development, more geared on, say, like if there's a medical need that we need to address, we can bring an expert in to talk to the powers of how we all need to address a particular need that a student has that's specifically out of usually a concern that's brought up a CSE meeting or a medical note or a changing medical situation. The first part of your question? We, we're posting regularly. We are reaching out to our neighboring schools to see how they're doing, what's working for them. We're even thinking about taking our show on the road and creating some sort of job fair where they can come in and we can onboard them at the time that they, that we actually meet them. So, hi, here you are, let me take, would you like this application? Let's do everything right here now. You can start as soon as everything, you know, so we're trying to move the process along as quick as possible. There's still a shortage island-wide. I don't, you know, we are trying, but we certainly, no one on Long Island has it perfect right now. I could tell you there were school districts that opened with minus forty-six, that actually opened up in far worse shape than us. Everyone right now, slowly but surely, we're interviewing and we continue to hire. We continue, we continue to hire. You know, about every week to two weeks, we're interviewing a new pool of people. So as the applications come in, we get them as quick as possible and then we do our best to interview and then hire applicants that are appropriate for our students. Oh, point, yeah, it's point-six. I'm sorry, the screen is a little off, so we lost that last. I couldn't tell you that off the top of my head. I will tell you, we are somewhere between one and two full-time BCBAs. We have one that works directly for the district. We have another one that works between three and five days a week as well. And we evaluate that regularly and we make sure, like, if the second person says she needs an extra day, she gets an extra day. So it's to meet the needs of the students. I would have to get the number of few I don't know off the top of my head. But it's enough to keep one to two BCBAs busy for the entire year. Elementary has one per building. The middle school has one, but they have an extra psychologist. And then at the high school, we have two, but then they only have two psychologists. So when we had, we had some part-time positions that the grants allowed us to make whole. And rather than just continuing to split more people, we made them whole in certain places. So the middle school received an extra psychologist and has one social worker. And then the part-time social worker at the high school became full and that brought them up to two, and then they have two psychologists. So each building has a significant amount of mental health support, but it's slightly different in terms of their certifications. Okay, so fifteen-one-ones, the number of sections, that's by section at the high school. So for every math section, every science section, every social studies, every English, ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth. So here, I'll pull up that slide. In the middle school, we have twenty-one sections, but for every student, they have to take a math class, a science class, a social studies, and an English class. We have, in the elementary level, we have our fifteen-one-one classes. We did have to split a few classes this year because the CSE recommendations and the recommend, when the recommendation says you need a special class, then we make sure that we do what our students need. We would like to make a fair-like environment, which would be welcoming and we could get, yes. For some of those positions, yes.
Yes, there was SUNY, there's SUNY Application Week where you were able to apply, what was the dates? I think it was last week, Monday through Friday. You can apply it up to five schools on SUNY for free. Yeah, that's fine, absolutely. There's the big tour that took place this week and I know one of the, one of our students was going on. Actually, one part of that grant that I also mentioned through Nassau BOSIs, anybody that finishes the online AP program gets free admission into the Empire SUNY School, which is their online program. So that's a side benefit that was added on. And that's a two-year grant. Okay. Yeah, I could put that application out. I get, I get the chief and I'll have a lot of the applications that, a lot of the civil service jobs that go out. I could start putting those on a Google website and stuff.
Thank you very much for your time this evening.
So to conclude the superintendent's report, I wanted to just thank Ms. Manzi, Ms. Imhoff, Ms. O'Rourke, and Mr. Dumbo for their presentation this evening. So thank you. And Mr. Lucetti, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Graham. And on, again, behalf of the board, same, thank you so much for the presentation. It was, you know, obviously a lot of dialogue, a lot of questions, so it's nice to have those. And I appreciate all the good work. So this is public participation. So the section gives the Board of Education opportunity to recognize residents who wish to raise a question or make a brief statement on agenda items, and agenda items only. The time available will be five minutes. We, you know, just rules as we come to the podium, we state our name and an area of where we live, and we'll take it from there, so. Hi, Ms. Tina Tally. No, of course.
Hi, Jennifer Dina Tally Mitchell, Alfred Street. So I have a few questions on the presentation. One is- Um, one is, I did see that a BCBA is posted as a job listing. So do we actually have the BCBA on staff as well as, um, ones that are out, that are, um, contracted out? Or are we missing them? Um, two, I do know that the social worker in Belmont is, last day is next week, and I haven't seen a posting for that yet. Have we replaced that already? Or, um, are we replacing that? Cause I do know that that's one of the grant positions that I've been speaking about, about making sure that these people know that they're going to have a job. Um, and then, um, you guys asked about the power, so that was my other question about that.
Awesome. Thank you.
The social worker posting, uh, it was already up, it already closed, and we do have interviews scheduled, uh, the first level of interviews screening next week. As for the certified behavior consultant, we do have an agency individual who can work with us up to full-time. And then in addition to that, we do have someone working directly for the district. Uh, she will only be with us for a little bit longer and we have posted for her position to replace it.
So the social worker position, you have interviews for it. Um, who is taking over the caseload that the social worker currently has while there is a lapse? Cause obviously you're not, you're not gonna be able to hire somebody within a week and have that covered. Is that, is there coverage? Is there, are we stretching people or? And when it comes to, as you all things, like a social worker, my son personally is one of the ones that sees her weekly. Um, so it's a little, you know, he came home hysterical crying that Ms. Romano is not going to be his social worker anymore and it's taken two days of still being very upset about it. And I understand, things happen and people move on. Um, but I also don't think that having somebody in a position, especially with special needs children, having to try to reconnect with one person and then try to reconnect with a third person and, and so on and so forth. So are, is someone temporarily taking over or is the caseload, how is that happening?
We do address the mandates. We do make sure our students are seen and, and it's important for them to be seen by someone that they know if possible. So there is a full-time psychologist in the building and then there's the ability for other, um, mental health providers from the district to come in. There's, there is a second provider that comes to Belmont on a fairly regular basis and she'll be supporting as well. And when we look at that caseload, if we need to offer additional support, we'll figure it out. But we'll try to do it with in-house people and, um, individuals that know our students.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Okay, if no one else has any questions, we'll move on. Thank you for that. Um, so approval of the minutes, uh, I need approval of the minutes for September twenty-eighth, uh, meeting, so I need a motion. Motion, Ms. Rollins, second. Second, Ms. Rivers, all in favor? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Uh, we have personnel actions, uh, now, so resignations, terminations, and leaves of absence. Superintendent of School recommends the Board of Education approve the resignations, terminations, leaves of absence, and/or position abolitions in accordance with applicable provisions of education law and civil service law cited in Schedules A, B, and C. I need a motion. Motion, Mr. Shide, second. Second, Ms. Rollins, all in favor? Any abstentions? Motion carries. We have appointments, tenures, and salary changes. Superintendent of School recommends the Board of Education approve the employment appointments, tenure appointments, and salary changes in accordance with applicable provisions of education law and civil service law as cited in Schedules A, B, and C. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Shide, second. Second, Mr. Desco, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, any abstentions? Motion carries. We have personnel agenda, addendum, recommends the Board of Education approve personnel items listed on each schedule as presented on the addendum. So a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Rollins, second. Second, Mrs. Rivers, all in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Motion carries. We have omnibus items A through T. Give you a second to look it over, but we will need a motion. Motion, Ms. Rollins, second. Second, Mr. Desco, all in favor? Aye. Any abstentions? Motion carries. I'd like to take a moment to thank Ms. Estrada and the benefactors of the donations for the gardening club. So thank you for the donations. We do appreciate it and the students appreciate it. Okay, so we move into action items. Uh, we have a thirty-twenty A charge. Uh, whereas the Superintendent of Schools has preferred charges against employee named in executive session pursuant to Section thirty-two, thirty-twenty A of the New York State Education Law, and whereas the Board of Education has determined by vote of majority of all members of the Board that probable cause exists for the charges preferred against said employee by the Superintendent of Schools, be resolved that the employee named in executive session is hereby suspended with pay pending a hearing on the charges and a final determination thereof. This is a roll call vote, right? Motion first, excuse me, need a motion? Motion? Motion. Uh, Mr. Myers, second. Second, Mr. Desco, all in favor? Aye.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Lucetti?
Yes.
Mrs. Rolland? Mrs. Rivers? Mrs. Desco? Mr. Myers? Dr. Barnett? And Mr. Shide?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Motion carries. Um, we have a few reports, um, from subcommittees of the Board. Uh, so Refit Committee, uh, someone attended a refit meeting on October fifth that wants to speak a little bit about.
I guess Kat and I both attended and Dr. Graham was there as well. You know, they discussed all the lobbying that they do for financing and how important it is to continue to lobby for equitable education financing. I think we can all in this room agree that that is a worthy and noble cause. So that was really what the meeting was about.
Awesome. Thank you. You wanna add anything, Mr. Desco? Okay, okay, cool. Uh, and thank you all for attending and Dr. Graham as well. Appreciate that. Um, District Health and Safety Committee, uh, met on October fifth. Anyone on that one? Uh, and the NISBA Business Meeting Delegate, um, we had, there was a meeting on October sixteenth. Um, so one other thing as far as, uh, subcommittees, uh, we have, um, you know, it's part of the Board discussion, uh, items, but it's not really discussion. We just wanted to mention to, uh, everyone out there that we have started, um, with our new Superintendent Evaluation Process. Uh, we have picked a committee tonight that will work, uh, in conjunction, uh, to, you know, identify the topics of area. Um, and, you know, work with, um, the rubrics that we have to evaluate the Superintendent for this year. Uh, and working and collaborating with Dr. Graham to, um, you know, uh, in a meeting. There'll be multiple meetings and a schedule. Uh, and, um, I just wanted to say that, uh, the committee is gonna be led by Mrs. Rollin, uh, along with, uh, Mr. Myers and Dr. Barnett. So that is your committee for our Superintendent Evaluation and we look forward to, um, you know, the goals and the, and all that good stuff that comes along with it, so. Um, the other Board discussion topic, uh, was, uh, you know, the do no harm policy. Um, so I think, uh, as far as a topic, it's just, you know, I think the Board, um, if anyone wants to start, um, you know, it is something that gets reviewed every single year. Um, and if anyone wanted to start the discussion about that, I'd be more than welcome to. Uh, I know personally myself, uh, I, um, have always been an advocate of it. Uh, and I think it's something that we need to continue, um, for our students right now at this time. Um, but I'm willing to listen and, you know, have a little discussion with some other people so we can make a decision. Anyone?
Yeah, I'll go next. I, um, I approach this from multiple perspectives. I was a Regents teacher, right? I taught Global Ten for a long time. Um, not always an easily passed Regents. Um, I understand that the stakes that come in with the Regents course and, um, and the teaching, right, that goes into preparing kids for Regents. It's not easy work. Um, and we don't always know what the state is going to put one hundred percent on those tests. So I think that that lends itself to some of what you were saying. Uh, Mr. Lucetti, I also know now too, working more closely with the New York State Department of Education, that we're really in New York State approaching changes. Um, changes in our graduation requirements, changes in how instruction and how assessment in particular is going to play. So as the state moves more towards project-based assessments, problem-solving, and less towards that standardized testing, I think we need to be open to the fact that our students are going to need support in those. And, um, the high-stakes Regents, I think even the state is trying, starting to see that it really wasn't always the best direction to go in.
Yeah, I mean, I think I, I get it. The high-stakes testing is not conducive to learning. The pressure on the students is not good. But I do get a concern that we're not setting our students up for success on the next level. Right? Because it's gonna be happening to take, you know, longer-term tests when they get to college, if they're going to college. Um, so I think we need to sort of balance what we do and how we do it, and especially in context of what's coming out of New York State. Cause, cause I think they're finally seeing light that being shown in their eyes. But, um, so I, I think, especially during these few years with COVID and everything that went on with that, I, I think it was perfectly, uh, great that we did that. I, I, I really do. Right? But I think we need to make sure that we're not short-changing our students, right? That we're not giving them the challenges that they need to succeed. Um, and, and that, um, that, that we believe in their, in their ability to succeed. Now, that doesn't mean that a Regents test is gonna say that they can succeed. But we need to make sure that we're, we're giving them the testing that, that shows their ability, right? And then, you know, and also measures what they've learned. And I think the project-based assessment is gonna be part of that. And then how do we do that and the, all the professional development we have to do with the staff to, to make sure that we're evaluating that correctly, so. I know I'm not saying it's a no-go, but, um, I, I, there's a lot of thoughts on that that I'm just, uh, trying to wrap around.
You know, I just wanted to say, I mean, we were shared with a lot of data from, uh, other school districts and some of the, um, competing school districts that our students will compete against when they are moving forward into the sec, uh, post-secondary education. And it's competitive out there, um, you know, and, uh, I just look at it, and again, from a parent, parental, um, view of going through the college process, um, you know, my, my thought process is one thing. Again, you know, some educators up here may look at it different and I do understand both sides of it. Um, I just see, um, that we are making sure it is part of their grade, right? We're not, you know, eliminating the Regents score at, on, cause it's gonna be on that transcript, right? That's, that's part of state. Um, but there's other districts out there, um, that are, you know, again, we were at twenty percent at one point in time.
That was true, I.
I was so blessed to get it down to ten percent, right? So I mean, we are still holding students accountable for their grades. Uh, but the do no harm is just, and we saw the numbers. I mean, it was, it was up there and we saw someone on numbers this week. Um, we've, we've assisted, I guess is the word to use, a lot of kids, um, along this way by this policy that we do have. And, um, I'm not sure, and I know that some of the theory is that, um, you know, kids will take it more serious if it's accounted more. But, you know, I'm not so sure of that myself. I'm not convinced, um, that that's the case. Um, so, um, yeah, that's, I'm, I'm solid in where I stand. I know, I know that, so. Anyone else?
Yeah, so I'm not so much worried about, you know, what Comec is doing, what Babylon is doing. I think that's something we need to take into account and, and, and our deliberations and, and discussion and analysis. Um, you know, because when, when you're going to be evaluated at a college, right, you know, whether to apply for there, to go in, or, or when you're there in classes, um, they take a lot of things into account. They're not just looking at, you know, um, hey, they had a, you know, a, an eighty-two-point-seven, you know, grade point average and this one had, you know, an eighty-five, and we know that this one did not have, you know, uh, any, any end-of-year testing that affected them. I mean, I, I have, I have a child that, that, um, was not a good tester. Um, did very well in school, very well at the, uh, end-of-year test, um, but did not do well on, like, SAT tests. Actually, you know, sent letters to the schools that he applied to saying, "Do not take into account my SAT test." Take into account my academic performance at school because that is the person who I am." And they did. Um, you know, and he, he, you know, they got, uh, plenty of, 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 of money for, um, grants and, 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 and their application for, for going to the school. So there's a lot of things that go into that. Um, and I, I don't wanna put too much weight on, on the end-of-year test.
Yep.
Um, whether taking it away completely or putting a lot of weight on it. You know, I, I really think we still need to do it in some way and I think we need to figure out what the best way for students is.
I, I agree that there's like thoughts there on both sides, right? And, and you can't just throw something out completely and always go back and forth and do new things. But I, I think we have a common goal and our common goal is to pa, prepare our kids for the next step and the next part of their lives. And I will tell you that is rapidly changing every single day, right? And the world that they're going into is not the world that we went into and, um, and how we assess them and how we prepare them has to shift and change. And that assessment very much drives our instruction. An assessment and data should drive instruction, right? So what that assessment looks like and how we hold kids, you know, to high standards, right? Cause we don't wanna compromise high standards and we wanna have rigor in academics. Um, but that's, is that always what a Regents exam does? It, I, I think it kinda depends on the situation and, and it's definitely something we need to continue to talk about and get voice from all the different stakeholders as well, right? So like, because the way the kids feel about it, the way the teachers feel about it, and community members, I think that this is a really important topic that we need voice because we are basically going to start building anew as soon as the state comes up with all these different new pathways that they claim they're going to come up with. So, you know.
Ms. Rollin?
Um, I am very much, um, in favor of continuing the do no harm. Obviously, all the students are going to be taking those tests. Um, and if you're a very good test taker and it can increase your grade, that's great. If you are not a great test taker and it will bring down your average in the class, um, I like the idea of the do no harm. Um, particularly when there are other districts on Long Island in New York that do not, that have the do no harm for their students. I want North Babylon students to have the same opportunities as other school districts to be competitive to get into school. Um, and that's where I stand on that.
Thank you, Ms. Rollin. Anyone else? Good?
Uh, ju, just one more thing. I think that if we do move forward with the do no harm or, or what we decide there, it's important that it's, it's a complete package, right? So like, if we're saying that that testing is not the end-all, be-all, right, and we don't want our kids who necessarily don't test well to, um, to be penalized in that way, that we want it to be the whole picture of their work, then we need to also embrace that as a whole message, right? It's not, for us as a district, it's about instruction, it's about improving, um, the learning for the students and meeting their needs in different ways. And it's not, it's not always the Regents percentages going up and up and up. It's about what does our instruction actually look like, right? Cause there's two parts to that message, right? The do no harm part and then the part of what is, how are we gonna drive our instruction on a daily basis? And what's gonna be our compass for that instruction?
Okay, so the difficult part comes, you know, now where we, again, it, it's not something that's in place. It's something that was in place for the past couple of years and it's our duty to, um, you know, say tonight whether we want that to stay in place or not. So, um, I know I am a yes to keep it in place, so I'm just gonna go up and down the line and Ms. Rollin was a strong yes. Um, so I'll just go to the people who spoke first. So, Mr. Shide, you're gonna have to say yes or no?
I, I just have one other question. Have we heard from the, what is it, the Curriculum Committee?
Mm-hmm.
Where they are with this?
Yeah, so the, um, the summary that I sent, um, that Dr. Graham sent home gave a little bit of a, a synopsis of how, uh, this came about. Uh, the, uh, the MBTO contract of twenty, what was ratified in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, um, had in there that the CAC along with the Secondary Report Card Committee would annually review the weighting of the Regents exam. So, uh, in, I lead that process. So the Secondary Report Card Committee met in June, uh, to discuss it. They asked to wait until all the data came in from June to come back and discuss it. In addition to that, they asked for us to put out a survey to the middle school and high school teachers to, um, solicit their opinions and, and get their input on it. Uh, I created a survey with Dr. Klump and, um, with Mr. Willis and with Ms. Giselle, who are the co-chairs on the committee, the teacher co-chairs. And we, um, definitely did. We had a hundred teachers respond to that survey. Secondary Report Card Committee met the second day of Conference Day to review that. In addition to that, they asked us to put together some data that I sent home to you all looking at how many students were helped by the. looking at how many students were helped by the, the do no harm policy this year and, and as well as what were other districts doing. The secondary report card committee had twenty-two members on the committee. I'm a non-voting member. I just facilitate. Some administrators and teachers from both the middle school and the high school. That committee voted twenty in favor of removing the do no harm policy as it was currently written and keeping the regions weighting at ten percent. They would, wanted to go back and review the possibility of applying the do no harm policy specifically to English language learners and classified students and what that, that looked like for them. But they, their recommendation was to remove it as we applied it the previous year, as I said, twenty to two. Then Mr. Willis and Ms. Giselle came to the CAC committee, which I also chair, co-chair with Ms. Artiri. Again, I'm a non-voting member on that committee as well. They presented the recommendation from the secondary report card committee. And then that committee, that is also made up of representation from the MBAA and the MBTO. The vote was five in favor of the recommendation from the secondary report card, which was removing the policy and keeping the ten percent for all. And six abstentions from votes, six people abstained from voting. And that's why it's all before for you all now is because there was really a non-recommendation.
Mr. Scheid?
I, I think at this point, I'd, I'd like to vote to remove the do no harm policy at this point. And I, I'd like the, the CAC to look and see whether ten percent is the, is the sweet spot for the end of year testing, right? Is it, I know some, some districts are at eight and a half or nine or whatever it is. You know, so, so I think that's where I'm landing currently.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Barnett, Dr. Barnett?
I would like to vote in favor of keeping the do no harm policy.
Thank you. Mr. Myers?
I would like to vote, I'm a little tired, I'm sorry, to keep the do no harm policy for many of the reasons that were shared and from different experiences. And a lot of what Ms. Rowland brought up really kind of resonates with me. And I, and I think about our North Babylon students that are applying to colleges. Not everyone's applying to college in New York. They're applying, so it's not just Long Island. I, I don't know if a region's exam exists outside of New York. I don't think it does. And if they are competing with these students and you're thinking, you know, we're saying that our children are, you know, could be penalized for an exams that are flawed. I mean, I think about the geometry exams and the living environment exams. And from experience grading these exams, they come back and there's a mistake in this. It's poorly worded. If you actually look at the region's exams, there's jovial, I mean jovian, you know, planet. All these different words that these students never even have seen, you know? And I, I think that the teachers actually can create the best forms of assessments for the students. So I'm, I'm really, what like Dr. Barnett says, I'm really more interested in what the teachers are talented, teachers are doing in the classrooms. I think they know more than a standardized test. I mean, they differentiate instruction. They, they, they know their students. And for many reasons, I, I would lean, lean more on the teacher's side to create valuable assessments. So I would like to be, do no harm for our students in North Babylon who are competing against others. And I, I, I work in other schools, districts, so I, I know that there are not all, you know, twenty percent, ten percent. I know Nassau County from doing different research there, many schools, they don't count them at all. So that, that's my thought process.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Ms. Rowland, I think you spoke your mind. You're sticking with that, right? Uh, Ms. Rivers?
For reasons that have already been echoed and discussed, I'm in favor, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Desco? Thank you so much. Alright, so I think we made a decision. Again, we appreciate, I mean, again, I just have to say, you know, this is what it's all about, is us having these collaborative conversations. And I'm, I'm really, you know, happy that we, we can continue to do this on a regular basis. So, Dr. Graham?
Yeah, just for context, the idea of do no harm, for anyone who's listening and is not sure what we're talking about. Do no harm means that all students take the regions for a course that culminates in a region, a region's exam. If it helps them, it counts as the ten percent, and if it doesn't, it does no harm. It doesn't count in the, in the average. That's not to say, though, that it doesn't count. And I think, Mr. Lucetti, you were trying to make this point before. The region's exam is always going to be a standalone number on the transcript. So it was always there. It lives there. So it, it does follow the student. So some of the concern about having it not count in the, in the average is, or, or not having it count at all, is that students won't, you know, take as much stock in the exam and perhaps not give it as much attention. I can tell you, some of the data points that we did see and looked at is that our attendance at region's review classes was down. And that could be a function of students not, or students knowing that it wasn't going to count in the, in the average. And therefore, they didn't need to go to the review class and perhaps didn't do as well as they would have otherwise. That's a concern, but again, that's a one point of data. Looking at it from last year, I think we had roughly thirty-one, forty-two incidences of region's exams administered. And for only seventeen percent of those papers, those exams, did the regions actually count in the GPA and help the student. That's a concerning number to me as the superintendent. And so while I might say, hey, I advocate that the region's exam should count in the course average, I would want to see, you know, a couple of years of data and look at our numbers a little bit further. Because we don't want to be in a position where the things that we're doing in school are ultimately going to hurt our students when they're up against students from other districts, other states in the admissions process. So that's something that Ms. Gillen and I have already started to talk about. And how do we continue to focus on this work and make sure that we're best meeting the needs of our students? And it's an ongoing thing. And the nice, the nice thing about that language in the contract is it does provide us with the opportunity to revisit this discussion every year. And so hopefully next year, when we come back, it'll be, one, a little bit earlier in the year. And two, we'll have some different data to share with the board and to continue to make these, these discuss, these decis-, decisions together. Thank you.
And thank you, Dr. Graham, for explaining that to everyone. And again, like Dr. Graham said, and, you know, thank you, Mr. Scheid, for, you know, again, bringing it to this meeting. We were supplied with that dat-, data from the CAC and the secondary committee. And we thank you all for all that information, and we appreciate it. And like Dr. Graham said, we can continue to look at that year over year, so that, that is an important thing. So thank you so much. This is, gotta keep these on. This is the time for public participation. So according to Board Policy fifteen-ten, the section of the agenda gives the Board of Opportu-, uh, Board of Education an opportunity to recognize residents who wish to raise a question or make a brief statement on matters including but not limited to agenda items. This time will be limited to five minutes. Each question, again, come to the podium, state your name, and we'll take it from there. Hello, Mrs. Scheid?
Hello, everybody. Kathy Scheid, Monarch Avenue. Just a couple of things. First, Dr. Graham, I want to thank you so much for following up with Janet Goldstein that I had introduced you to, really by email. And she's gonna bring the program here to Everytown for Gun Safety. I just wanted to say thank you so much because I spoke to her. I think she said it to us on the Zoom meeting too, when I dragged Bob over to the meeting. So I had met Janet through another group I'm involved in, and she really cares about this program. And I would really hate for her to get here from East Meadow and nobody be in the auditorium. So if there's any way-
What is that program again, Ms. Kathy?
Yeah, just say what the program is.
The, Everytown that we're gonna have on-
Oh, the one Dr. Graham mentioned, okay.
Yes. So she's gonna give a, a great presentation. And I'd really like to see it promoted so parents can come out and hear about, you know, it's not about gun control. It's about gun safety. And I think we learned from the news the other night that no community is above this, and we have to protect our children from guns. And they're a great group. And the one night I said to her, and I think Bob heard it. She said, I've reached out to so many superintendents, and some of them said to me, oh, we don't have to talk about this. That's not important. So I just wanted to say thank you so much for following up with her. I was very excited. You can ask Bob. I was jumping around the dining room when I heard that North Babylon was gonna host this. So thank you so much. My other question is, I'm really glad you brought up about, you know, we didn't really have to deal with this with the regions. But my concern with, I, I can understand it's a tough decision. But then how are the, are students gonna perform on SATs and ACTs later? If we don't have the regions kind of be important? I mean, the kids are gonna get the impression that it's not important. You said they're not going to the review classes because, hey, if I don't do well in the regions, it's not gonna count. How is this gonna carry into college when they're gonna have big exams or they have to take the SAT or the ACT? That's my only concern. And then I have another question for Ms. Mancy. With the preschoolers coming in, if you, do the teachers, if they identify something that the child needs, like OT, PT, speech, is it addressed right away since they are our preschoolers? How does that work?
So we have a preschool committee on special education, and students can receive services on the preschool level, ages three through five. They do transition to school age services, and that's the Committee on Special Education. That's the CSE. So they come in with a full IEP and plan based on a CPSC to CSE meeting. So it's kind of a transition meeting where you take your preschool recommendations and you make them your school age recommendation based on the student's progress throughout that four-year-old year. If they get to kindergarten and we see they need more help or maybe less help, or they need a smaller class, or maybe they need a bigger class, we call a CSE meeting and we do try to respond to that.
So they'll get the services while they're in our preschool program now? That's really what I want to know. Like if, if a teacher says, oh, this child really needs OT, can an OT come in and work with the child?
In our UPK?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question.
That's okay, that's okay.
So UPK, that's a little trickier. They can't necessarily come and provide the service in our preschool unless it's a push-in service. Because the county has certain rules on how you provide services in a preschool setting. So if it's a push-in service, yes, that's something that's easier to recommend. However, there is a shortage of providers at the preschool level. So we can make the recommendation.
I know, yeah, I know.
But then finding the individual who's qualified can be a bit of a challenge. So that's all based on CSE recommendation. So if you're in a UPK and you're not a classified student, UPK doesn't offer building level services, such as like an AIS service or like a reading support or something that you can get school aged.
We, but aren't there agencies? Cause I work for an agency that provides those services. Why can't that agency come in if the child needs OT at the time?
If it's a push-in service, they can come into our pre-, AUPK. If it's a pull-out service and we need to give them a room and it's a one-on-one individual service-
Right, that's difficult.
That's difficult because there are certain rules we have to follow in order to set up that room for those students.
Okay, alright. That, that explains a lot. Thank you so much.
But they can go, just because we can't provide it in the schoolhouse doesn't mean they're not gonna get it. They can get to, they get to go to clinics.
Right, right.
To still receive the service, and some of them do receive it in their home.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Kathy, I actually, speaking from a personal level. I have, one of my children's grades are extremely important to her. She, if anything less than a hundred, she gets a little bit upset.
I have one of those, yep.
Yeah. And she does extremely well in, in her classes and on her tests. And even on AP exams did well and on the SAT. If you look at her region scores, which she did study for, it boggles my mind how she did so poorly. So-
I get it. I went through with all three of my children. I get it. I get it. But I, my just concern is that-
Right.
What example are we setting that maybe that's not an important test? And now how are they gonna sit for an SAT or an ACT or some other college eccentric entrance exam?
So she did well on her SATs. She did well on her AP exams. She didn't do well on her regions.
Yeah, and I think it all depends, we all know, you know, like it depends on the day with the child, if it's a subject that's good for them. I'm just stating a concern because I think you have to really think about that in the future, you know? And we, I don't want to, next year, we're turning around and we're saying, wow, we shouldn't have done that. Now we gotta switch it back on these kids. I'm just, I think you should think it out more. That's all I'm saying.
And if, if I can just follow up with the program she's talking about, Everytown for Gun Safety is, is a non-political, not about owning guns or, or being a gun owner or having guns. It's about how do you deal with making sure that whether you personally have guns or your children are going into a place where there might be guns? And how do you approach that safety and how do you have that conversation to ensure that your, your children are safe?
Can I say something? I guess it's a question. I don't know. Ms. Gillen would know. But the, the students that are taking AP exams and IB exams and a lot of these, it's not counting on their GPA because it comes out in June. And the other part, when you look at some of the applications now, and this goes along with what Dr. Barnett was saying, it's really changed. Like when I was a kid, you had to submit, you know, I had to submit my fifteen fifty on my SAT. But it, nowadays, it's, it's kind of optional, you know? And I think that, I think, I think that that's also kind of showing a little bit. And what they really want to know is, did your kid take the most rigorous program? The most challenging program that the school has to offer? So if you're, have a student at North Babylon High School and, like Ms. Rowland said, is, is your kid taking all these AP exams? Are they taking all these AP courses? Or are they taking the easier courses? Well, that kind of shows the colleges where that kid is, and that's what a lot of schools are looking at now.
So definitely, we're seeing a change in what colleges are looking for, in applications. And definitely since COVID, we do see more schools looking at SAT as optional. What, one of the things that I've noticed as I'm, I'm talking to different reps and looking at applications is actually even beyond what we're seeing as far as what the academics are. They're looking for unique children, not just, you know, I did every activity out there. But is there something unique about you, why you were taking the most rigorous course load that was appropriate for you? And we talked about this in September, and this idea of we've really been working on AP enrollment and college class enrollment and trying to encourage more students to avail themselves of challenging themselves of those courses. And I believe it was Mr. Dumbo who said in that presentation that the research says, you know, challenging yourself in an AP course and receiving a one on that exam is more beneficial than not having challenged yourself at all. So what we're seeing are colleges looking for kids that have taken the challenge, who have tried their, their best, or not necessarily AP everything, and are not necessarily in every sport and in every club, but has something unique about them, a special talent, something they've cultivated about themselves, and that they have tried at the level and pushed themselves as far as they could push themselves. And so, you know, when Mr. Scheid talks about his son writing a letter saying, hey, I'm not a great test taker. Think of everything else. That's really where the college essay comes into play and a student's portfolio or resume, you know, and whatnot, in trying to show that college, this is what's special about me. And that's, I think, one of the beauties of what we've been doing here in North Babylon is creating and cultivating programs that are unique, right? The cosmetology program, the TV studio, pushing kids to take different types of, of classes. We even have a college class in automotive, right? That kids are getting college credit for to help kids find each of their own unique pathway to, to success. As Dr. Barnett said, to be successful, like we've always all talked about, it's not about graduating. It, our job is to make sure kids are successful once they leave us from here. And that's why we've been pushing many of those things and why we were so grateful when you, you know, moved forward with a nine-period day because it availed us of being able to provide some of these unique opportunities that our students' transcripts and our students' portfolios are as competitive as any of our neighbors down the road. And we do have unique programs that many of our schools right now around us are not able to. Our theater program and what, whatnot that we were able to have. So it's not the fifteen fifty anymore there, Mr. Myers. It's, it's the whole, the whole package. The whole package is what I'm trying to say.
Some people drop names. Some people drop their grades, I guess. But we are very proud of you, Mr. Myers. Thank you. And it's paid off for you. You know, okay, we're, we're on camera. We don't want-
I just wanted to speak, I just wanted to speak to, is there a way when we have that event? And especially, I feel, when we have certain events that we can have the phone, the robo-call reminder? My two kids definitely came in this week with their-
Charged Chromebook.
Their charged Chromebook. So that when we have these type of events, like this one coming up, that we can definitely reach a wider audience.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? I have one more coming down.
Jen Dean and Natalie Mitchell, Alfred Street. So I'm sure you guys are all wondering if I'm going to ask about the bus drivers, and I am. So where are we with contract negotiations with the bus drivers? And have we lost any bus drivers since the last time or the last Board of Education meeting? Have we gained any bus drivers since the last Board of Education meeting? And after reading what happens and is going on with West Babylon School District, my concern is, do we have a contingency plan in place if they do decide to strike like West Babylon does? And then I'm also going to say that the grant for the social workers is up this year. Are we going to continue to keep those positions after the grant is over?
So just as many times as you have brought that to our attention and the concern of the board has been, you know, throughout those years too, as we did, you know, provide those jobs and, you know, we all are concerned. And during the budget process, we will continue to see how we can fold those in, very valuable positions that we do have. Again, it's budget season and that's where we'll start those conversations. And I know you attend many meetings, so you will get updated on that. Frank, if you can just give us a quick update of the status. I know we are in negotiations currently, I guess we can say that, right?
Yeah, so I'm not going to comment on the negotiations except for that we are in negotiations. But no, we haven't lost any bus drivers. It's not really typical during the year to like have huge fluctuations of bus drivers. So sometimes we have people, one or two, that might have to go on leave every once in a while, one will retire or move. And then every once in a while, we pick one up. But since the last board meeting, no, there hasn't been any changes. And I wouldn't, I'm not concerned about the situation that you referenced in West Babylon as some sort of, you know, I don't, it's not necessarily a strike, but like, we have no indication that that's like a risk here in North Babylon. And if something like that kind of were to happen, we have plans in place and resources to be able to get through that. So definitely do not worry about that.
Thank you, Frank. Thank you.
And the social workers, I'm going to throw it out there one last time.
Well, I said, I mentioned the other-
I know, I know, I know. But it's an important position, and it really is. And especially because there are, after COVID, you have a lot of parents and children that have gone through a lot. And these kids, especially your younger ones, didn't have the socialization that they, that most kids that are older did. And coming in, they're lacking a lot of skills that they need extra help with, so.
Thank you. And like I said, you've been coming to many meetings and Bob wants to make a comment, but what I'm saying is, I think you see our concern.
Yeah.
Something that we know is very important and we'll do our best to, you know, get it in there.
Thank you.
Yeah, this, I will tell you, this board, this administration, the special ed department, that's a very high priority, the social worker. And Ms. Manzi spoke about that during the thing. The social workers that we have in the school is doing such a great job in helping the students. And I think the social media aspects of what the kids have had to deal with the last, you know, five or so years, I think has really started to take a toll, especially on the younger ones. So I think that's going to be a very important position. We need to see how we can better support that or increase support for that if we possibly can. And I know everybody here is committed to that.
I appreciate that.
So I mean, we can start with the first job fair now. I don't know if I'm allowed to do this, but anyone out there, if you need to, you know, look for employment and you're interested in being a para, we have maybe some openings available. So I don't know if I'm allowed to do that or not. But please, anyone listening out there, if you have friends, if you're paras who have friends, make a recommendation. We need, we need community members and outside of that to come and help us, so, thank you.
I do have one more thing, I do apologize. You were saying for the UPK, do we actually have anybody in UPK getting push-in services? We do have people getting push-in, okay. So I wasn't, you were saying they can, but I wasn't sure if they actually, there was. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so again, I would just like to say thank you to everyone involved in that clip again, that really touched all of our hearts up here. Thank you, yeah, thank you for the gifts. It was very, very nice. Again, I think we're in a wonderful place here in continuing to make North Babylon, you know, the best community and a place for education that we possibly can. You can see how much we all are invested, not just the Board of Education, but the staff, the administration, everyone involved. I think we're really in a positive direction. I am going to ask for a motion. We have to head into executive session for personnel matter. So if I can get a motion for that. Motion, Mr. Scheid, second. Second, everyone is in favor, correct? And we'll see you all then. Thank you all, please safe travels and stay safe out there.